It looks good.
Thanks.
Hey, everybody. Hi, Trevor.
Hey, guys.
Greg got one, too.
Hey, Dennis. What did I get?
A haircut.
No. No, I just, you know, that's just the standard model.
Just naturally falls that way.
Yeah.
All right. What do we got? We got everyone.
Yeah, except I've got to unmute. Okay.
Hi, Jeff.
Ready to go?
Yep.
It's at six thirty? It is. All right. We'll call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, April nineteenth. I have my little script to read here. The meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. The planning commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the Sign Up to Speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Okay. We have a roll call, please, Kathleen.
Yes, Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Wile.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a quorum.
I got a motion on the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we adopt the agenda as staff recommends with Item four B continued to May third and Item four C be confined to May third. And the questioner, Richard, five B and five C. Is there any action there?
So on the two items for lighting this evening, staff recommends that due to the issues raised, we'd like the planning commission to continue the items so that we can work with the applicant to create, one, some simulations. We'd like to have something to show what this would look like and also a formal response to the letters that were received. We'd like to be able to include all that in a staff report and bring it back before the commission and, you know, try to address these concerns. We haven't had luck reaching the applicant this afternoon. We've left them a couple of phone calls and messages as well as an email with this information, but that is staff's recommendation that we continue this and without knowing how long it's gonna take the applicant. If the commission likes, we could continue it to the second meeting in May, or we would be willing to renotice if needed, but definitely we could not make the first meeting in May as those reports are gonna be printed this week.
Okay, so I amend my motion to move Items five B and five C to a date uncertain.
Can I just ask, would there be any value in expecting to continue it, but having some discussion first to, in case there's things that we might raise that might be helpful to have in the record? I mean, no?
I would ask Richard that, but that's a hearing. We'd have to open it up to everybody and.
Yeah, if you want to call the item and not just continue it, then we would, we would open it up for public comment.
Right, right.
And then you wouldn't have public comment on the new. This would be a new hearing theoretically.
Yeah.
With new data.
So is there any point in pushing it off to a date uncertain, or should we just continue it to the second May meeting and let it ride and see how we go at that point? Wouldn't that be more efficient? John?
Your call. I'll make it to, what's the date, Richard? May what?
We're working on that right now for you.
May seventeen.
Yeah, May seventeen.
Is there anything big we have that night?
So far on the seventeenth, you have the CUP for the farmer's market, temporary parking, and potentially the temporary tow yard for the summer.
Okay, and the ADUs are a separate meeting all together?
Yes, we're the twentieth is what we're looking at for that one.
Okay, I, so I'm moving to amend my motion to move five B and five C to May seventeen.
I second the motion.
The motion was, was the.
I'm sorry, what?
I was just gonna clarify, that's staff's recommendation for the agenda plus moving Items five B and five C to May seventeenth. Is that correct? Is that the motion there?
And, no, and four B and four C to May third.
Yes, I think that was the staff's recommendation in the agenda.
That's, that's correct. Is that your motion, John?
Yes.
And the second, David, is that your?
Yes.
Okay, can we call the roll, please, Kathleen?
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, can we get a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to Item two. Written and oral communications from the public on matters that are within our jurisdiction but not on the agenda. Kathleen, do we have any speakers signed up?
No, we do not.
Okay. Takes us to Item B, Planning Commission and Staff Comments and Inquiries. Commissioners, comments? John?
Uh. First question is of Richard. When is the official date that the dark sky ordinance kicks in for commercial buildings and then, then houses? Because I know it got extended a year, but I think that I may have passed already.
I, let me look into that because yes, you are correct, Commissioner Mazza. The deadlines have passed, however, when discussing this with others who are working on it, it appears that the council gave a grace period, and I'm trying to figure out myself what exactly was the amount of time. So I would be glad to have that for you at the next meeting so that I can finish up that research. I'll be quite frank with you. It's it's leading me down some interesting roads because people are telling me things I'm having a hard time finding in minutes.
Okay, and then my second question is I guess also of Richard. When is the City Hall gonna open up for planning commission meetings? In that the library is already opened. I personally, I'd like to know if we could have the ADU meeting in an open session because there's a lot of interest in it.
We do not have a reopening date yet. When will be able to do in-person meetings? One of the concerns we are working through is my understanding that if somebody does not want to attend the meeting in person but virtual, we need to make sure that we have that ability because if we didn't, we'd effectively be denying someone the ability to attend because of their concerns over COVID. So we are working on that hurdle as well to make sure these meetings could be not only live, but at the same time on Zoom, which should be interesting, but I don't have a date yet. I inquired in our last meeting about that and last week, and it's still to be determined. My guess is that, you know, with the state orders of the June fifteenth reopening, I would assume we're gonna be close to that, but once I have a date, I will let you know.
Okay. Any, yes, Greg.
Yeah, my comment can follow right on that. Actually, I have two comments, but I've talked to a lot of people from Norm Haney to, I just spoke to Alex about some of the technical issues about reopening City Hall. And my sense is that it's it's a question of inertia. On the one side, the political will is sort of feeling like, well, we need to sort out the technical details and we're not sure how we'll do that. And on the technical side, they're saying, well, we're, you know, we're just gonna wait for some political instruction before we do much, so I think we maybe have to try to push it from both sides. One suggestion that I've heard was to have the option to put a monitor outside now that we're gonna have some nicer weather and allow people to maybe sit in some chairs out, out there and come in just when their items are called. Maybe we'd have Plexiglas panels between spots on the dais, or maybe we're far enough on the dais, far enough apart anyway, that maybe that wouldn't be necessary. And then I hear from Alex that they're technically really pretty close to being able to put Zoom on the monitors in the hall that it may just be a matter of a couple or a few extra pieces of equipment, a switcher or a router or something to make it happen. I think we're talking probably less than a thousand dollars all in, so it seems like we just need a little push and maybe I'll try to take it on myself to informally talk a little bit more about the technology and then talk to a few council members and see if we can't kind of put something in their lap that they can say, yeah, this, okay, great. This is, this looks like the way to go ahead. I can go to my next comment unless people want to weigh in on that.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Um. Richard, can you remind me of the standard or the code section that gives the plant, the planning director the discretion to approve the greater than ten percent Woolsey rebuilds administratively without sending the application to us? I noticed that three of the the consent items had just said, and they include an addition, but they didn't say how much. And so earlier last week, you guys sent me the numbers on how, what the additions were. And I did the math and figured out that three of them respectively are twenty-two percent, thirty, and twenty-one percent of the original TDSF. And so without seeing those applications, I have no comment on whether they're totally fine or what, but I just raised the question in my mind. What is the actual authority that lets you decide those administratively when they're that big?
So if you take a look at those applications, you'll notice that they're a combination of a planning verification.
Yeah.
And then there is a subsequent application separate from that that's a administrative plan review. And those are reviewed under Chapter seventeen, seventeen point six two Development Permits, which gives the planning director the ability to issue an administrative plan review. In conjunction with that, we also look at Chapter thirteen of the Malibu LIP, the Local Implementation Plan. In Chapter thirteen, there are a number of exemptions. And should a project fall within those exemptions, then it makes it permissible to use our dismissal code, which is Chapter seventeen and an ministerial decision, so an administrative plan review. So that is why they are done as two applications and not one application because the exemption, as you pointed out, only allows for up to ten percent.
Okay, and I, yeah. Maybe we'll talk more offline about that because I still have some questions at the periphery, but maybe it's not important right now, so.
Dennis, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, thank you. Chair Jennings, yeah, a couple of things. The one thing I've noticed going through town and I was always told we can't use them are the bottom dump trucks, the double trailer trucks we have running through. And I was standing at my mail place down here at Tranca, so just down the street from me, and I counted six going by within, you know, a couple of minutes. So that's the big double trailer, bottom dump, uh, trucks and trailers, no covers over the tops. And when the hydraulics go on those, they just barely start to go. So the bottoms will start to open up a little bit, and then you start getting debris to come out the bottom. Not good. One of my hot rod guys that goes to shows had about seventy thousand dollars worth of damage done to his sixty-six Nova when the hydraulics went on the bottom dump and just sprayed the, his car. And the only reason he was able to chase the guy down is he was lucky. The guy next to him had a GoPro on the, on the dash. So it took him a couple of weeks, forgot where these trucks were going, but he found out. So these guys were skipping the scales, you know, the hell with them. They don't need to come down our highway, and I, this is something I'm sure I'll have to take up with, with Mr. Frost and and, and Public Safety Group, or maybe even, I don't think Public Works, but at least those guys, and see if they can't help us, so. That's just a little thing I've been watching going on. I know it's probably a little different. You would hear that from me to say something about that, but I'm not a big fan of those trucks, especially on our road out here.
Mr. Smith, those are, those are for projects within the city, not just passing through?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow them one of these days when I start seeing them coming back in or which way they're coming. I'm not watching, seeing so much come going east or the other direction, but I'm definitely, they're going out towards Magoo. So I'm gonna find out and see what the deal is. I don't know if we can stop them, but it's not good to have.
No, there's, there's, there's rules and there's permits that are needed for certain sized trucks, you know, on PCH itself, so you know, if we have more information, you can report it to Doug Duck and put you in the right direction as well. So if it's a local project, then it's a different situation because they have a construction plan usually, which would have other restrictions.
Yeah, I just don't like it. But anyway, my other thing is, for all the years that I sat in that front row, I've been listening about basements and for the life of me, I can't understand why we have restriction on a basement at one thousand feet. And I don't know how the other, the rest of you commissioners feel, but I'm it's something that I thought there should be no restriction on. It's in the ground. We should be able to make a basement as big as somebody wants to make it. I don't think, I don't think a thousand feet, it should stop at that. I think if they want a couple thousand feet or three thousand feet, they should be able to do all that. So I don't know how you guys feel about that, but it's always kind of driven me nuts, and it's one of the first questions people always ask me, so just maybe a little feedback from you guys on that.
John?
Well, Jeff knows on basements also that you can build any size basement you want. You just have to count half of the square footage over a thousandth feet against your total. And this was a, what, a year-long debate at City Council, maybe ten years ago? Yeah. Vetted like you wouldn't believe. So you have to go to City Council to change any of that. I just wanted to see if we could have a little poll and see how many of the people sitting on the dais, if we opened up, has had their two shots. I assume I have.
We don't have to reveal that. That's, you know, private health data, so I don't want anyone to feel pressured. They have to be sharing that. I prefer if we don't answer that on the dais.
Oh, okay, whatever. Hopefully, you're all safe, and I can sit next to you.
My, my second one is in two days from now, so I have, I have.
I asked what to say.
Well, you have.
Okay. Yeah, I'll agree with John that the debate on there were some famous quotes that came out of that basement debate. Basically, I know it when I see it, you know, whether it's a basement or a cellar or what, this or that, it did, the debate went on forever. And basically, the thousand square feet not attributable to TDSF was a compromise that just ended up solved. It didn't solve the problem, but it ended up ending the discussion, and we just went forward from there. But again, it is a, clearly a city council matter to deal with. Staff, comments?
Yes. I would like to let everybody know, as on the commission, in case you have any questions coming up for the next meeting, there is a scheduling conflict I have, so Adrian will be stepping in for me in our first meeting in May. But please, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I'll be working with him. So I'd be glad to answer any of those questions. And then also, in case this question comes up, I wanted to share with the commissioners that at the last council meeting on the wireless item, the mayor allowed members of the public to defer minutes to each other. And it, it worked. It required some hunting down of names. But with that, plus, you know, from that experience, plus the experience that we had here when we heard the wireless item and the chair handled folks divert giving each other minutes, deferring minutes. We've taken that feedback. We have submitted it to our vendor for the software that we use. And we are working with them to create a solution. And I know this is something we've mentioned before, but I did see correspondence between the City Clerk's Office and Prime Gov last week to this effect. So I can keep you on the loop as I hear anything about that because I know that is something of interest to this so that I wanted to let you know there was some action taken on that with our vendor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's go to the consent calendar. Are there items that any of the commissioners wish to pull from the consent calendar? John?
I'd like to pull three B six.
Three B six. Anymore, anything else? From you, John?
Nope.
Anybody else? All right, Kathleen, anybody in the public asked to pull an item from the consent calendar?
It appears the only people signed up to speak are to answer questions on behalf of applicants, so no.
Okay, can I get a motion on the remaining items of the consent calendar then, please? Or I'll make it if you wanted. I'll move the Item three A one, Item three B one, Item three B two, Item three B three, Item three B four, Item three B five, and Item three B seven.
I'll second that.
That's moving on staff's recommendation.
That was our staff's recommendation, yes. Any discussion? Kathleen, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Could I just verify, was that Commissioner Hill that seconded the motion?
I believe it was.
I did. Couple of us did.
Okay, thank you. Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, John. Item three B six is a de minimis waiver for the property at fifty-nine seventeen Bush Drive.
I don't need a report. I just have some questions.
Okay.
Item three B four is a house on Cuthbert. It had sixty-eight fixtures. It's, it's septic system is thirty-six, thirty-four. This house has sixty-eight fixtures. It's seventy-five hundred gallons. It's the biggest one I've ever, ever seen. And I wondered why? And, and is this something that the is just chosen out of a hat by the applicant, or is there some reason for that?
So if I may step in and answer that, if I may say something before Ryan, I had a discussion of this with the building official, and she pointed out that our code only has a minimum tank size. And yes, this tank is about twice the tank that has been shown before the planning commission. And Ryan may have more exact details, but generally speaking, something that has to be kept in mind when we look at these septic systems is the load placed on them. So the house size, the number of bedrooms, the number of fixture units, the people in the house. And then the, the second factor of why you may need a big tank is what the ground is capable of handling in terms of dispersal. And so in the case of this home, one of the things that caught our building officials' eye was the, the number of large amount of drain dispersals, drainage fields. So one, this house has a lot of area, and so it's very possible that part of the reason for the tank and something we need to keep in mind is that if you have an area that doesn't percolate well, it's gonna be much slower. So you're gonna have more drain field area and a much larger tank just so that you could hold the effluent and retain it for a longer period of time before it makes its way, so. So then that way you can have a smaller dispersal amount uh, hourly, I guess you could say, over say a system that has a smaller tank which could pump out more hourly into the ground. Uh, so that is something that uh, you know, caught our eye about this one. So uh, that was the explanation I was given by the building official.
John?
Hey, I didn't see any geology report that said that. In fact, it was passed on, but uh, okay, i- is this? Uh, is this a huge house? Because it's the same number of bedrooms, same number of fixtures as the other one. But I don't know what square footage would have to do with anything, right? You can only use one sink if you have one sink.
Correct, you're 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 uh, and Ryan can speak to the the size of the house. Uh, but you're correct, Commissioner Maza, you know, the the septic load is based off of how many sinks, how many toilets, how many bedrooms you have, uh, you know, this particular one's identified as a five bedroom home. But yes, it's the bedroom, sinks, bathrooms, those types of things are are what develop determine the load. And you know, all houses only have one kitchen. Uh, there may be barbecue islands or something like that, but dwellings by definition are are one kitchen only. Ryan, do you wish to comment on the the size of the side of the home?
Um, I can just provide more um, information. Um, Commissioner Maza, in discussions with the homeowner, um, he presented the case that they wanted a larger septic system for the option to um, increase fixture units in time. If that was ever something they wanted to do, they wouldn't have to come back and upgrade to a larger system. Um, and then also, as Richard mentioned, um, the issue with the soils. Um, in my discussions with the environmental health administrator, she explained that larger septic tanks are used for um, larger, longer retention times. So um, the discharge is at a slower rate. Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Well, does this property actually have a bad perk?
From what um, the discussions with the environmental health administrator, she said, yes, it was. She said it was a weird um, case. There was a lot of um, testing, percolation testing. So um, if you'd like more clarification, I can go back and um, ask her for more information. Um.
Also, we do have the applicant, um, Greg with fever available for questions.
Okay, well, I don't think that's necessary. It's just a question, Richard, do we um, on de minimis waivers, do you ever consider the fact that they just want to get bigger later?
We do, we don't. And the reason being is the code has minimums. It it doesn't have maximums, uh, as I mentioned earlier. And so because of that, and also the the city's encouragement of wanting these uh, types of systems that are more efficient and cleaner than your conventional system, we haven't in our code set a cap.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
Okay, that's a receive and file, so we if there's no further action, we'll just receive and file it and move on. Um, that is concludes the consent calendar that takes us to item four A. Four A is the coastal development permit, um, and a couple of variances for the project at one eight eight sixty eight Pacific Coast Highway. Uh, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is a single family residence at one eight eight six eight P C H. The project was continued from the March fifteenth planning commission meeting. And at that meeting, the planning commission directed the applicant to install story poles to allow the planning commissioners, staff, and members of the public to view the story poles on March twenty sixth. Also, subsequent to the publication of the March fifteenth planning commission agenda report, the applicant has added an offer to dedicate a lateral access easement across the property. Next slide, please. The subject property is located on the east end of Malibu. The subject property and the adjacent property at one eight eight seven eight P C H are surrounded by a shared fence. Overhangs and a storage structure are located along both front property lines. No habitable structures are on the subject property. Next slide. This photo is from the story pole inspection on January eighth, twenty twenty one. The photo shown here accurately depicts the footprint and envelope of the proposed building. The applicant subsequently removed the seaward story poles as they posed a safety hazard for passersby and neighboring properties. Next slide. The applicant reinstalled the story poles as directed by the planning commission. And this photo is from the March twenty sixth story pole inspection. Next slide. This is from the January, this is from January eighth, facing northwest towards the project site from the deck at one eight eight six zero P C H to the west of the subject property. The story poles are highlighted here so that they're more visible. Next slide. And this is from March twenty sixth, facing northwest towards the project site from the deck at one eight eight six two P C H. Next slide. Questions were raised regarding potential conflicts with the proposed structure and the existing power lines. The applicant submitted exhibits that were routed to the planning commission demonstrating that the power lines would not conflict with the proposed structure. And a condition has been added to require the applicant to submit a written statement from Southern California Edison confirming that the project will not affect existing utility lines. The photo to the left is looking west towards the project site, and the photo to the right is facing east of the project site. Next slide. The project involves construction of a new four thousand two hundred and twelve square foot structure consisting of a two story residence and attached garage and associated development, as well as an offer to dedicate a lateral access. Next slide. The site then shows the footprint of the proposed structure and deck along with the five foot view corridors on each side of the residence. The project exceeds the minimum ten foot setback from the mean high tide line, which is shown in black. The proposed seawall is only for the protection of the onsite wastewater treatment system shown as a dashed red line and is located landward of the required seawall string line, which is shown in red. The seawall will be below the residence and will not interfere with beach access. Next slide. The lowest recommended finish floor elevation is twenty six feet, but the project is actually a foot higher at twenty seven feet. And the maximum proposed building height of twenty four feet is measured from the twenty six foot elevation on the seaward side. The lowest recommended finish floor is based on wave up brush reports submitted by the applicant and approved by the city coast engineer. Next slide. The project involves three variances, variance requests for the building to extend seaward of the building streamline and then the deck to extend seaward of the deck streamline on the seaward side and a reduction of the front yard setback facing P C H. Next slide. The solid red line indicates the code compliant building streamline based on existing adjacent homes at one eight 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 P C H located up coast or west of the project subject property and one eight eight six two P C H down coast or east of the subject property. Complying with the red line would allow a development area that is slightly larger than the proposed garage. As such, the applicant is requesting a variance for to reference corners on alternative uh, dwellings. The dashed green line is the proposed building string line and proposes to utilize the non adjacent up coast property at one eight nine zero four P C H to the west and the non adjacent down coast property at one eight eight six two P C H. Next slide. The pro pro, the proposed project involves a variance for construction of the deck to extend seaward of the deck streamline. The solid red line indicates the code compliant deck streamline based on existing adjacent decks at one eight eight seven eight P C H and one eight eight six two P C H. The dashed blue line is the proposed deck stream line, which is approximately thirty three feet eight inches seaward of the code compliance line and proposes to utilize a non adjacent up coast property at one eight nine zero four P C H and the non adjacent down coast property at one eight eight six two P C H. Next slide. The proposed building and deck would not extend any further seaward than the existing development at one eight nine zero four P C H to the west and one eight eight six two P C H to the east. The applicant submitted correspondence with exhibits demonstrating that the granting of the variance would not constitute a special privilege to the applicant or property owner because the resulting depths would be consistent with the neighboring properties to the east and to the west. Also, in response to several letters from members of the public, I should clarify the variance request would not result in the need for passersby to walk around the proposed development. The proposed stream line would be tied to existing structures and decks and would not extend the seaward of existing structures and decks. Lateral public access exists along the state of California's wet sand right away, which allows public use of land seaward of the mean high tide line as shown in the blue line and provides public access along and parallel to the sea or shoreline. Also, the applicant is offering a dedicate to to dedicate lateral lateral beach access, which would enhance public access. Next slide. This is the exhibit that the applicant submitted demonstrating the um, the depths of the surrounding area. And again, also demonstrating that the variance would not constitute a special privilege to the applicant as the average depth of the residents on both sides of the subject property are in line with the proposed residence. It also shows that the three nearest developed properties have exceptionally shallow footprints as shown in the green. Next slide. A third variance is requested to allow a greater than fifty percent reduction of the front yard setback. The required setback is twelve feet and the applicant is proposing a setback of four feet, um, which applies mostly to the second story. The first floor is setback ten feet and the second floor will be setback four feet. Next slide. And this elevation shows that the second story does cantilever over the first story, which is why the um, the setback on the second story is shallower than the first. Next slide. Following the publication of the agenda report packet, staff received several pieces of public correspondence. Correspondence includes the story pole certification from the applicant, which was noted as missing by several members of the public. And additional correspondence was received from members of the public generally generally expressing opposition to the three variance requests. And we did receive two letters in support of the project. Next slide. And with that, staff recommends approval of the project as proposed, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, disclosures of ex parte communications, uh, uh, David, let's start with you.
I visited the site uh, twice um, when it was originally calendared and then when they put in the new story polls. Uh, talked to the architect there at the time owner and uh, nothing isn't in the report. I will get there, I do have a question for Lily based on what you just said, but let's get through disclosures.
Okay, um, Craig.
I mean, yeah, um, I visited twice, uh, one, I guess both times actually with Dennis there. Um, met with Lloyd Ahern, head of the homeowners association. And the second time, a number of other residents were there too, as was the architect. Um, I don't know that I learned anything new, um, but but there was, we got a lot of a sense of consensus from the the residents about what they thought was the problem there, so. Well, I guess that's it.
Uh, I neglected to mention I had a phone call with Lloyd as well.
Dennis?
Uh, yes, ditto with Commissioner Hill.
John?
Uh, I just drove by, I was out of town for the story polls. I learned nothing that was in the staff report.
Did you, did your other gentleman learn anything that was not in the staff report during your conversations?
No.
Okay. Okay, I uh, visited the site when the second showing was uh, going up uh, at that time. Um, also met with um, Lloyd Ahern, uh, by accident, actually, uh, at that time. Also, I had a telephone conference with, I believe it's Dustin Wimmer, who's the applicant's um, spokesperson on on the project, uh, and uh, saw the the overhead shot that Lily referred to, the 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 drawing that had been presented. Um, uh, apart from that, I don't believe there was anything that that hasn't been presented in the staff report. Um, okay, you had a question, you said, David?
Well, Lily, you were listing in the correspondence, one of the things that in reading through everything again this afternoon, uh, at least a couple of people indicated that they didn't think the story polls had been certified. Um, but I saw a notice of certification that was submitted by the applicant. So the are the people opposing the project simply wrong about that?
I believe the story poll certification was submitted after they had written that correspondence or or that they found out that the course, the certification was submitted after the fact.
So it has, it was certified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? John?
Uh, Lily, when you showed the slides, you showed one with a yellow outline of the story polls from an adjacent deck. But those, am I correct, those story polls were not the deck, they were the house itself? And the story polls were never put up for the deck?
That's right. The story polls represent.
It was apples and oranges when you're comparing, looking from a deck to looking at a house, correct?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, the the story polls reflect the the residents, not the deck.
But you don't have a picture from a house looking at the story polls from the side? Just from somebody's deck?
Right, I I couldn't, well, that photo was taken from, I think, three houses over. And I just took it from as close as I can get to to their deck without entering their property.
John, just a question for you, aren't story polls traditionally the house, not the deck?
Right, but you were taking a picture from a deck of a story pole. And yeah, okay, so it wasn't necessarily set back like it looked. This was my question, and I think she affirmed that. Okay.
Okay, uh, Craig, questions?
Yeah, a question for Trevor, um, just to confirm, the the map shows the property lines are out of sync with what's actually happening in real life and the residents have claimed it's all screwy there. But we have certificates of compliance. Do those fully cure any uncertainty about the property lines having the C O Cs? Or is there any potential residual uncertainty about that?
I I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
Um, the way the houses are set along the 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 land uh, overlaps the drawn property lines on maps by, I don't know, six or eight or ten feet in in each case for a significant stretch. And the residents, to me, said something along the lines of, yeah, we have some real issues here with the whose property is whose, but we have C O Cs here, so the question is.
I mean, they're 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 they are correct lots, you know, that's been verified by planning. What's what shows up on Google Maps or something like that isn't determinative. You know, there's a site survey done as well that would help determine we would be used for uh, the calculations needed for you.
Okay, uh, then two questions for Lily. Um, the first one, we have a wave up brush specified of twenty four point six feet and the finished floor elevation of twenty seven. So that leaves to me two point four feet for sea rise, it sounds like. I didn't see a specific number for sea rise, but is is that the number they use, two point four feet?
Oh, I would need to go through the wave up brush study, but the, yeah, I mean, they they did not base their design on the twenty eighteen guidelines. They they based it on previous guidelines and that was reviewed and approved by the coastal engineer.
Okay, then the other question is, uh, you mentioned that we would need a letter from Edison regarding that that there won't be interference with the power lines. We don't have yet that yet, though, right?
Correct, we would require that prior to um, building permits or plans.
Okay, I have I have some comment on that, but I'll save it for comments.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll open the public hearing. Who've we got, Kathleen?
We have the applicant team of Guy Niadek, Dustin Wimmer and Reg Brown, and two members of the public, Jason Ventress and Lloyd Ahern.
Um, so the 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 first three you mentioned are the applicant team, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. I believe Guy Niadek is going to uh, begin.
All right, um, Mr. Ganatic, you have uh, fifteen minutes. You can use some of it or all of it, and you can save as much as you wish for rebuttal if you care to do that. We got the clock, but I don't see the speaker. Maybe that's because I'm only seeing a few people here.
I saw him earlier. Let's see if he's still there. I do see him in the meeting, and it looks like he's unmuted, so maybe he just needs to start speaking or or click a confirmation that he's giving permission to mute, perhaps?
Yeah, I'm there he is. Yeah, while you've exhausted my technical skills here, I can I can click on him, but that's about all I can do.
Do we want to move on to maybe Dustin Wimmer and see if he?
Let's uh, let's go to Mr. Wimmer and see what he has to say about Mr. Gannatic.
Good evening. Can you hear me? This is Dustin.
We've got you, Dustin.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, I'm actually gonna give the presentation tonight.
Okay.
I'm not sure Guy might be having some technical difficulties, but he is the project designer and applicant, and we available to answer, hopefully, hopefully available to answer questions.
Good.
Along with Reg Brown, who's our coastal engineer, also here to answer questions. But I will go ahead. I I submitted a PowerPoint presentation. You see, oh, there we go.
Okay, Kathleen, put back fifteen minutes, okay?
Certainly, I'll do that.
Well, thank you. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. As mentioned, so my name is Dustin Wimmer. I am the applicant representative for the project of one eight eight six eight Pacific Coast Highway. We originally scheduled in February sixteenth and received various community letters that we wanted an opportunity to address along with some staff concerns and clarifications, and so that was originally continued to the March hearing. But prior to that, some of the concerns from the community, which I think were also reaffirmed, were related to primarily two different issues, the first being the streamlined variance request. Some of the concerns was that it was, the request is too far oceanside, not consistent with the neighboring properties, would potentially interfere with passage on the beach and potentially block views. Obviously, we kind of talked about it a little bit, but the story polls, there was concerns about the story polls, because they've gone up, they went up originally in two thousand nineteen. Again, in January, there were concerns that they they weren't accurate, and they also, the community requested opportunity for them to be reinstalled for the neighbors and HOA and commission to view, which which we ended up doing after the in March, after the March hearing. Some of the staff clarifications that were requested to be addressed was one related to the utility pole and pole wires in the proximity to the proposed building and confirmation that the subject property was a legal lot. So we'll kind of run through each one of those and address those concerns. Next slide, please. First, related to the streamline variance inconsistency with the neighborhood. In some of the comments from the community, they felt like the streamlined variance was being requested to obtain something more than the rest of the neighborhood, something that would be beyond what the rest of the neighborhood or not be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. In fact, the request for the variance would allow for a house that is consistent with the neighborhood. As noted in the staff report, on page twelve, the strict application of the zoning ordinance would result in an allowable development area with approximately thirty two feet from PCH in an area slightly larger than a proposed garage footprint. It would deny the applicant string line privileges enjoyed by the other surrounding property owners, such as the residents at eighteen nine oh four PCH and one eight eight six two PCH, which have been developed in a similar building streamline as a proposed project. Next slide, please. So this is that exhibit that we had prepared. And primarily to show how, one, the proposed code, the code with the strict adherence to the code would affect the proposed project and how the proposed string line is consistent with the neighborhood. The exhibit illustrates the proposed depth of structures both to the east and west of the subject property. The subject property is outlined in yellow. On either side of the proposed property, we're calling non-typical structures, they're shaded in green. They range in depth from twenty nine to thirty three feet, and these structures do not represent the neighborhood. As mentioned, the strict interpretation of the code would be the string line between these non-typical structures on either side and would result, again, in roughly a building roughly the size of a garage. That string line is shown in the blue dashed line on the exhibit. The buildings shaded in orange represent a building more typical of the neighborhood. These depths range from seventy six feet in depth to ninety seven feet in depth or an average of just under eighty four feet. So again, what we took is five houses, five typical houses to the west and five typical houses to east and measured the depths of each one of those. In addition, the depth of the structures at eighteen nine oh four and one eight eight six two are eighty three feet deep and eighty five feet deep respectively, also averaging about eighty four feet. And so those two structures, to the left, you see the eighty three foot deep structure, which is at one eight nine zero four. And then you see an eighty five foot structure at one eight eight six two. And in between is the green string line. And so the two buildings that we're proposing to streamline to are both the first typical type structure on either side of our proposed property. But they also represent an average of eighty four feet, which is also in line, if you were to take the next five structures on either side and average those, this is right in line with those. So at at eighty four foot depth, resulting string line is very consistent with the neighborhood. And also mentioned, I think in the staff report, but also worth mentioning again, that the city actually has two ways to measure the rear setback when it's on a on the coast side. One is the string line, which we're discussing, but the other is a mean high tide line. And the requirement is to be ten feet from the mean high tide line. And this proposed house is fourteen feet, so it exceeds the depth in the other measurement for rear setback. Next slide, please. Related to beach access, the proposed string line will be in, would be in line with the other homes in the neighborhood, so wouldn't be blocking beach access. In addition, the owner has volunteered a lateral access he's been along the beach to allow public access in perpetuity. Next slide, please. Here's a photo looking southeast, what you'll see, next slide. Outline there in blue, that's the story polls. If, as you look further to the east, you'll see a yellow structure. The yellow structure is a structure that the proposed string line. But as you can see, there's a white structure beyond that and a red structure beyond that, kind of all roughly in line with one another. And this house would be also in line with those structures as well. Next slide. Next slide. This is looking from the opposite direction, looking northwest. Next slide. The white structure you see in the background is the structure that the house is proposing to streamline to. But again, as you see further back and further back beyond those houses, you see houses that are roughly in same line. So this house, proposed house is 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 in line with both houses on the east and houses on the west. Next slide, please. Related to story polls. These story polls were originally installed back in two thousand nineteen. And after delays in the project, they were removed. They were reinstalled in January of twenty twenty one. Due to safety issues, some of the poles were moved that were on the ocean side. And at the request of the planning commission in the community, the poles were reinstalled again on March twenty sixth and notified for an opportunity for for members of the community and the commission staff to come and look and view the site with the story polls up. All three times, staff inspected the story polls. All three times, there was a certification from a licensed surveyor. Next slide, please. Regarding the existing utility poles that run along PCH, we were asked to provide some more information to confirm that there's not a conflict between the existing story poles and the proposed building. Next slide, please. Several exhibits were provided. Next slide. Next slide. This is a floor plan of the second floor, which is the closest portion of the building to the front setback. You can see the existing poles in the lower right hand corner. It's actually about six or seven feet from the proposed building, because it's actually in the corner of the property line. The wires themselves are horizontally about a foot and a half away from the closest portion of the building. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This is a elevation view of the same pole. The actual electrical wires are about fifteen feet above the proposed building, so you'll see. And again, about a foot and a half horizontally away. We've actually communicated with a dry utility consultant, and as you'll see up and down PCH, you will see the similar condition. In fact, that the structures on either side of this building are actually closer to the property line and to the poles than this proposed structure. And so we talked to staff and are are acceptable to having a condition that would confirm with SCE. But also worth noting is SCE does not have an easement on on this particular property. And again, we've communicated with the utility consultant that has also let us know that that this is an acceptable condition. But we're fine with the condition to get something in writing from SCE prior to building permit. Next slide, please. Related to the legal lot. Confirmation, we provided a title report. Within the title report, there's a recorded certificate of compliance, which is the process you go through to validate legal status of a lot. That was approved by the city per certificate of compliance, ten dash zero six, by the city of Malibu in two thousand and ten. Next slide. And this is just a copy of the the cover sheet of that certificate of compliance. Again, that's recorded on the property and approved by the city of Malibu in two thousand and ten. Next slide, please. Just to reiterate, again, if you look at the blue dashed line, if you were to use the strict adherence to the code, that would be the resulting streamlined setback for this property, which again is about thirty two feet from PCH would be the most depth that the property would be allowed. Without a variance, the owner would be left with a home about the size of a garage and denied the privileges enjoyed by the surrounding property owners. The variance, again, is to allow consistency with the neighborhood, not to try to get additional depth or seaward setback than the neighborhood homes already enjoy. That is it for my time. If there's any time left, I'd like to use that at at the end of the public comment period for rebuttal, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, you have three minutes and forty five seconds remaining. That concludes the applicant's presentation. Who else have we got? Kathleen?
We have one moment.
I know you mentioned Lloyd Ahern.
Jason Ventress and then Lloyd Ahern.
Okay, would you unmute the first speaker, please?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Ventress.
Good evening, Chairman Jennings and fellow commissioners. My name is Jason Ventress, and I reside at one eight eight six two PCH. Thank you for the site visit on March twenty sixth to see the magnitude of this proposed project and the burden of the three variances. Today, the story poll certification came in along with a batch of letters from my neighbors. Why the certification didn't come in until the day of the meeting is unknown at this point. The nature of the certificate will be addressed by Lloyd. I'm baffled as to why these three variance requests are being considered. When we rehabilitated our home, which is adjacent to the east of the applicant, my family had to comply with the string line, which ran from one eight eight six two to one eight 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 on the west. Mr. Barzakini was our architect, and Craig George was a representative from the city who guided us. Craig made the decisions, and we abided by them. Everyone who's ever built on this beach has done so without variances to the string line, the actual string line, not the applicant's version, which runs from one eight eight six two to the non-conforming shack at one eight nine oh four. The string line is the Magna Carta of the beach. This applicant wishes to supersize his parcel by applying for special privileges with three variances, which will only cause an arms race and eventually decimate the concept of string line. As Lily knows, we had a nice turnout of neighbors at the story poll meeting. Lily introduced Guy Nyadek to me and to other neighbors as the applicant's architect. We questioned his vague answers to our pointed questions, so we looked him up online. We discovered he is not listed as a licensed California architect. We then went one step further and asked a Malibu local architect to look him up. Same answer. Nyadek is not licensed in California as an architect. Last Thursday, we asked Lily to check his credentials, too. We haven't heard back. There are too many glaring inconsistencies with this project. The applicant's architect isn't a licensed architect. The applicant's planning consultant, Diamond West, have the directions of east and west confused in their supplemental report, along with misleading diagrams. It seems that the key players in this project are unfamiliar with Malibu and seem to be testing the neighbors in the planning commission as we're constantly having to ask them to do the right thing. We welcome a neighborly resolve once this gets straightened out. Meantime, until then, please deny this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ventress. Lloyd Ahern, next?
Uh, yes, Mr. Ahern is next.
Lloyd, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Lloyd Ahern. I'm the president of the Los Tunes Homeowners Association. I live about a thousand yards from this project. It doesn't really affect me, except that it really does affect me. If the string line is broken on this beach, it will change the harmony and livability forever. A brief history of this project. Story polls went in in April of two thousand and nineteen, way out on the beach. Then they were up for about a month and a half and disappeared. Jessica Calvert was the planner at the time for the city, and she was in charge of working out the problem. She left Malibu to go to Ventura. In January of two thousand and twenty one, the story polls came back, but none were on the beach. So we figured, well, Jessica scaled back the project, which was acceptable to everybody. Then the first meeting notice came, and we realized the applicant was committing a ruse. No story polls were on the beach, but the plans were way out on the beach and way out on the highway, three variances. Then we started a process to straighten this out with a disingenuous applicant. The planning department wisely postponed the February hearing because you knew something was wrong. It was bumped up two meetings to March fifteen, where the chairman Jennings said, put the story polls up. Then they told you a non-truth that night, Jeff. They said that the story polls were too dangerous to be in the surf line. That was not true, and that's the guy that you just talked to, Wimmer. They had been up from April to June in two thousand and nineteen, and they were just fine right there in the ocean. We settled on having a meeting with the community, the commissioner and the applicants, the architect and the architect on March twenty sixth. The story polls went up for the third time. There was no surveyor present that day. They put the story polls up where they thought it would placate the beach, the people on the beach. Before the meeting, a neighbor forwarded me their email asking if the story poll placement would be certified. Neighbors emailed request certification again on April eighth and last week. Just today, we received a story polls cert certificate from a firm in Tracy, California. This story poll certificate is full of holes. Parker, could you please put up the the story poll certificate on the screen? Thank you. Can you just pan up with it? Thank you. All right, on this certificate, we see the approval for the story poll plan was done in March of two thousand and nineteen. That was back two years ago. This certificate is dated April fourteenth, a few days ago. So this thing just came in out of, because we started asking for it. It should have been here with the day that we did it. The surveyor should have been there when the polls went up. The local market architect, the local Malibu architect who was consulting with us said that the surveyor's job is to certify the placement of the story polls on the day they're put in. You would think that when Chairman Jennings says to put the story polls in, they would do what they're supposed to do and not try to skirt the law again. For those reasons and many more, I think it's very important to delay this project, send it back, and have a community meeting with the applicant and the neighbors and come to a happy conclusion for everybody. I also request that when I also request that when you do approve this, that you have a monitor that is hired by the people on the neighbors on the beach and paid for by the applicant to make sure that everything is done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Any other speakers, Kathleen?
We do not, and we have three minutes and thirty seconds for rebuttal.
All right, Mr. Wilmer?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we've got you now.
Yeah, briefly, I'll try to address some of the comments. Number one, related to Guy Nyadek, he's an experienced designer. He hasn't purported himself to be a licensed architect. Maybe staff has made that statement because often the people who design buildings are licensed architects. In this case, Guy has a whole wealth and life experience in designing and developing buildings. Has never purported himself as a licensed architect. And that's not a requirement of the city that the designer of your building be licensed. At some point, when you go into building and safety, that'll be the case. Related to the story poles, as mentioned in our presentation, the story poles have actually been placed three times. All three times staff inspected. All three times, a licensed survey came out and certified that they were putting correctly. I think even in the presentation of them planning, they had pictures from both the January inspection and the March inspection back to back. All three times, they were the same. The plan hasn't changed. That might be the date of the story pole plan that was referenced in the certification was based on the story pole plan because the house itself has not changed. And so the plan hasn't changed. The same story poles have been placed three times. Besides that, I don't have any other responses.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wilmer. That brings us back to the commission table.
I have one disclosure I forgot.
All right, Craig.
The second time I was there, I measured the distance between the fog line and the utility pole. And long story short, it's further there so that what they say would be a foot and a half between the wires and the house would be more like six inches.
Okay.
I mean, we can't be precise because we, you know, but ballpark, it's closer than they're saying it would be.
Ever?
Hey, Johnny, I'd recommend that you allow the applicant and anyone who commented to speak on that issue if they want to. The point of disclosures is so that the evidence can be addressed during the public hearing.
Exactly. Mr. Wilmer? You heard Mr. Hill's disclosure? I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yeah, I can hear you and.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, we had the exhibit prepared to show the the location of both the building and the poles. I didn't personally go out and measure that, so, but that was the exhibit that was prepared and that was based on measurements in the field, both by the surveyor and the placement of the building by the design team. So I don't want to, you know, say anything specific as far as against Commissioner Hill, but that's the measurements that we have. Either way, my understanding of SCE's requirement is it's actually a vertical requirement. And if it's fifteen feet, you know, that's my understanding. There's actually buildings, I think actually in one of the public letters, there's actually buildings along PCH along, you know, this run and other runs where the poles are actually on top of the buildings. But in our case, it's not actually conflicting that the building, there's separation between the building and the highest power lines.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that brings it back to the commission table. I'd like to take a stab at this. Alex, could you put up my slides, my slide deck? Okay, so this is the Mr. Wilmer's exhibit. First of all, let me say, obviously, the application of the strict string line ordinance deprives the applicant of any kind of a reasonable residence on this property, at least in my mind. And certainly deprives him of the same sort of space that his neighbors have. But it's not a question of, in my mind, it's not a question of whether a variance should be granted. The question is what variance? So this is Mr. Wilmer's exhibit, and if you can see, I've added a couple of little lines here. Could you give me the next slide, please, Alex? This is drawing like with a grease pencil, but this is a line that I drew. The red line there is attempting to depict the string line of the houses that are up coast. It's not exact, but it's more or less as close as I could get to depicting the string line that had been observed at that portion of the coast. And the next slide, please. And this depicts the string line of the properties on the down coast, the east side. And you can see where those two lines cross. It does seem to me that the applicant, you don't need to be stuck on this idea that somehow the string line has to be drawn to the next property. If we're giving a variance, the string line can be drawn to any point we say it's to be drawn to. That satisfies what we feel is the appropriate result. In my mind, the appropriate result is the string line should be at about where those two lines cross. The applicant can choose to conform to the string line of the properties to the east or choose to comply with the string line of the properties to the west. Or actually, it could go between the two, you know, to be sort of parallel to the highway. The problem, go back to my first slide, if you will, Alex. The problem is that I see that there's a concavity in this beach. And it's not really obvious until you start looking at the string lines. And when you do look at the string lines of the neighboring properties, I think it does show the concavity pretty clearly. And my difficulty is that if we give the applicant the string line that they're asking for, then that has a cumulative effect on the properties that are up coast, the neighboring properties, when they get to be developed. Everybody is going to be moving and marching closer to the ocean. I don't think that's a result that we should be looking for. So those are my comments. That position where those two lines come together is pretty much where I'm stuck on this at this point. And thank you, Alex. You can put that slide down now. And we'll take comments from other commissioners. Yes, Craig?
Yeah, if we could still look at your slide again, just to follow on your comment. I think maybe your string line on, I mean, I think we're pretty close. I think I'm seeing pretty well eye to eye with you on this. But I think your line on the east side is encompassing some deck. For example, on the Ventress property, where it is drawn now is actually the deck that has some roof over it. But so that, maybe the tight shot is more illustrative. There you go. The two houses further to the east, the eighty-eight foot and the ninety-seven foot, that line, it looks like that's more the string line if you consider that the front of Ventress's house is deck and outside. So that would put the line back a little further. And what I saw on site, what seemed to make sense was a line that's roughly parallel to the line you've drawn, but more in keeping with the front side of the deck to on the western half of Ventress's property. And on this map, you can see your red line and right next to it, maybe about five feet landward of it. Five or ten feet landward of it, it's hard to tell the scale. But that looks to me like what the eastern line would be. But similar concept in looking at the beach and the site, I felt a convergence of those two different string lines with an apex there. And I guess my only feeling is it's maybe a few feet further back than what you see.
Right, let me say that this is like drawing, you know, on a fine diagram with a grease pencil. I mean, I make no pretense that these lines are accurate. The only thing we could do, I can't say to the applicant, okay, fine, there's your spot. All we can do is to send it back to staff and say, look, this is what we're thinking. It's your job now to come up with the actual physical delineation. John?
You did a good job on that, I think. One thing I wanted to, I'm a little bit worried also about the setback from the highway. If you look at.
Can we, maybe we should talk about the front first and then go to the highway?
Yeah. Well, okay.
I have a question about the front.
Okay, David?
I guess I would ask Trevor or Richard, what is the legally mandated measuring point for string lines that are, or is there one that we're sort of bound by in making this determination? Can we make two different lines or are we obligated to go from, like, if it's not the adjacent property, then the first property that is sort of fully developed out to, on the east, out to the one on the west? Or can we just, as Jeff did, sort of, if the beach curves, come up with our own lines?
The code requirement is the nearest corners of the adjacent up coast and down coast properties. And where we are here, and then let me take a step back. So there's, that's in the code. Then there's a string line mod where you can skip a property. But then, when you start going to the situation we have here where we're going a couple of properties and inferring things, that's a variance. And you know, at that point, you're looking for a similar point. The code in general says that string lines should be drawn from like and similar structures. And so in this case, it appears that this one proposal is, you know, being drawn from what appeared to be similar. There were the edges of the home. And since it's a variance, the commission has the ability to deviate from the standard language in our code.
There's no set point that you need to set for a variance, whereas there would be for a minor mod for the string line. But what you're looking for is to balance how much they've been deprived of a privilege enjoyed by the, you know, other properties in the area versus you don't want to grant them a special privilege. So that's what you're weighing is, you know, what other people are getting in this area and what would be a special privilege to give to them.
Craig?
Yeah, just to be clear, the dotted blue line that the applicant showed us is not accurate. If you look on map A zero point two, it's the survey, the string line, the quote-unquote legal string line is drawn on that. And whereas they drew their dotted blue line basically parallel to the highway, the legal string line is much further out on the east side. So would create a house that approximately two-thirds the size of what they've proposed, not just a garage, but about two-thirds the size. So to my mind, you, yeah, of course, the legal string line is absurd in this case, but it, at the same time, it is the legal string line. So the point would be to not diverge any further from it than is necessary to be doing something reasonable.
I don't see any hands up, but then I don't have a very big grid here. John, I see you.
Okay, you also are dealing with a curved beach. And when you have a curved beach and you try to draw string lines from houses that are four or five houses away on either side, you give the applicant an advantage in that they're in a curve and the other ones aren't. So it makes the lot bigger, or the buildable area bigger. But I agree with everybody with the explanation of variance. I just wanted to point out if we're, and the reason why I wanted to bring up, if it's okay to bring up the front setback, is that we're using houses. For example, eight, eight six two, eight six oh, eight five six, they all have off-street parking. Okay, they are part of the situation here. Now, when you say, okay, let's give a variance to move closer to the highway, I'm looking at also a factor of safety. I mean, one of the things we always have to look at is how safe is what we're approving? And if we grant the full, I think they asked for ten feet, and we don't grant enough for a car, you're in a situation where cars are on the highway and, which is, by the way, a bike route. And they have, because they're already on the highway, it's very dangerous to back out because you're already sticking out six or seven feet. So by granting a, the full variance requested, you're creating a dangerous situation, which has been taken care of. Granted, back then, people didn't drive in the second lane. Back when some of these houses were built, coast highway was two lanes. The easement for the highway was, I think, seventy feet or whatever it is. But in existence, in the thirties, which I think Jason Ventress's house was built in, you're a long way from the highway. In this case, you're right on it. And so I question whether we can grant a variance that does not allow a car to park. Outside cars. So that's something we should look at. Maybe you make it, I don't know, the average car, I think, is like sixteen feet, something like that. Even in that case, you're going to have a dangerous situation because the minute you move back a foot, you're on the highway. So that's something we should consider there. I don't know if there are any other comments on that. I have some.
Let me go to Dennis. He's had his hand up, but I couldn't see him.
Thank you, Chair Jennings. Well, Commissioner Hill and I traced all through this area, looking at all the different angles. And you're really close on this, Jeff. Commissioner Hill and I thought, you know, maybe about five feet off of that glass wall that they've got would be the building. And that's pretty close to what you've got there. That's okay. And when you get out front on PCH, that's a problem. And when you look at how they're going to drill the piles and you get a drill rig in there and the rigs take up almost all the lot to drill, it kind of ended down, you know, they're going to probably be seventy, eighty feet deep. They could be five or six feet in diameter. So that's a big rig and it's right up against those wires. So the drill rig operator is going to want to have at least ten feet when that mast is ticking up there and he's right next to all those wires. So there's, I don't know how we do the PCH variance. I don't, I don't think you can do it. I think that we, Commissioner Hill and I, we agreed on this whole thing. We were together on our thoughts. And I feel that, or we felt that giving them about the five feet from the glass wall for the building itself and giving them their six-foot deck puts them in line with the Ventress property. And it looks good. And because of that curved beach, as you're correct, Chair Jennings, everybody just would keep inching out. And if last guy would look like that house out at Victoria Point, he'd be sitting out there in the middle of the water. So I think, you know, with those changes, sending it back to staff and having these guys redraw this, in my mind anyway, is what needs to happen. But that situation out on PCH, I mean, we're all agreeing, that's a, you get out of your car there and it's tough. So I don't know how you're going to get them getting closer to that horrible road.
Is it, am I missing something? My understanding is that the extension toward PCH is only on the second floor. And there are two unenclosed parking spaces at the ground level. And there's, and the exterior wall, the street, the wall of the house that's closest to the street side is setback. I don't have the number in front of me. Lily, maybe you do. What's the setback between the edge of PCH and the actual exterior wall of the house?
It's ten feet for the first floor and four feet for the second floor.
Ten feet.
Ten feet. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I, obviously, it's a problem we've dealt with with other properties, but I think that moving the first floor level back and allowing the upper story to move toward PCH is. moving the first floor level back and, and allowing the upper story to move toward PCH is, is a reasonable solution to the problem, at least until you start running into the power pole. But like Mr. Wimmer said, the power lines are elevated above where the house is going to be there. And, and if, you know, that, that's a question of what SCE is, is authorized to allow or, or required to allow by whatever electrical codes comply. But, but so those are my thoughts as far as the street side. Variance is concerned. I can't see who's.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yeah, I just.
Craig, okay.
Couple of things, just to circle back for a second to Dennis. I think we agreed it looked like about five feet off the glass, but by way of giving direction to staff, I think that felt like pulling it in about 10 feet from what the proposal is, right? Is that kind of what we thought about 10 feet tighter than, than as drawn right now? On the ocean, on the, on the PCH side, it's really, the two floors have two different sets of issues and I think we're getting to that. But on the top floor, yes, the Edison lines are up above the house, but all the other lines, like the cable and the fiber optic and whatever are approximately 22 feet height versus the 24 foot height of the house. So they are right next to the house, like literally six or eight inches from the house. And if they're going to sway in the wind or anything, then we may have contact there.
But those, those don't carry high tension.
Okay.
Correct.
On the bottom side, the issue is it's really the one outdoor space that is on the west side. That's sort of staggered. It doesn't go in as deep. So you have one, one exterior space that's parallel to the highway and you have one perpendicular that's on the west side. To get out of that space, you have to back out. And unless you have a tiny car like a John Mazamobile, you can't pull out backwards without backing right into the traffic lane. You can't, you can't back into the shoulder. And I just had this experience studying turning radiuses for parking and such on the Malibu Beach Inn council thing. And found out that the, the nominal standard turning radius for a car used in a lot of street regulations is 25 foot radius. So if you tried to apply that 25 foot radius to that parking space on the west side of the house, you get your, the tail end of your car in traffic. And then you've got about 500 feet from that spot to the blind spot to the west. So in other words, you can see 500 feet of traffic coming towards you, but no more. And if traffic is moving at 60 miles an hour, which it often is there, the stopping distance is 300 some feet, a little over 300 feet. So, and, and, and it happens in about six seconds. So in other words, you've got six seconds to back out of that parking space into traffic and be up to speed enough that you don't get hit from behind. So, you know, probably most of the time it's doable, but it just seems to me that if you push that bottom space in about four feet, though their, their required setback is 12 feet, they're talking, they want four feet. If you push it to about eight feet, then you'd have more capacity for more cars to be able to make that backing move into the shoulder lane without having to back into the traffic lane. Is that, did I make that clear?
I was following you up until about the last sentence.
Well, it just seemed like to, to get enough radius.
Are you talking about pushing the garage wall, the, the garage itself seaward?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Yeah. And certainly for the, certainly for the space on the west side, I think the garage, it's hard to say whether they could do that or not. I think they're probably okay there with the garage. But the parking space on the west side.
I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem to me that there is enough width. Just looking at the, at the plot plan, it does, that there's enough width to allow two cars to park nose to tail and be able to move out that way. Yeah, I mean, one, one solution you might do is to have the applicant, and we've done this before on PCH, is to say, all right, look, we've got two enclosed spaces. One's enough and, and ask for a variance in, in that regard. That's a possibility. John, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to point out that, that you do have a bike lane next to it. And you do have people in the area who park on the highway. So you don't necessarily have the ability to back out and pull into the shoulder. Sometimes you can pull right into traffic like they do down by Moon Shats. You know, I've committed that enough to see enough of those happen. But I think we do need to bring that wall back in and, and, and have the ability to have the car fit on the lot and use the, the shoulder to back out into rather than be sticking out into the shoulder. Our standard parking spaces are, I think, 18 feet deep. We could shave that a little, but there's a lot of 18 foot long cars. So that's, that's something we've got to consider. I have no problem the second floor sticking out there. That gives them square footage that I don't see any of the other neighbors having, by the way. So, but it's still okay with me. If, if we're sort of done with that, I'd like to talk about the height and the, and the sea level. But if there's more discussion on this,
We haven't resolved anything, so why don't you, just let's go on and talk about what you want to talk about.
Okay, one thing I'm looking at, this house is 50 feet off the beach. Okay? It's no, it's no, you know, shrinking violet. And it's, and I, I don't maybe have these backwards, but I believe, we don't have a wave uprush study, but we, we've been told that I believe they're using a 2013 high tide line. Instead of the 2018 that we always see. And my question would be, number one, we can bring up the Reg Brown on this in a minute. Is, is that what he's using and is the 2018 closer? And you're supposed to use the most landward. The second thing is this is probably the 10th house in a row that I've seen come to us. Where the wave uprush matched the street level within a hundredth of an inch. Okay, we no longer have this drop down of the front 50%. And it cannot be a coincidence. So I would like to see the math on all this. This house is 20, 50 feet high in the front. Does it need to be? Is it supposed to step down? Is that correct? And I've also never seen, when we get these wave uprush studies, we've had some 18s, we've had some 16s above sea level. We now have 26 feet. That's one hell of a wave and that's a lot of, that's a lot of sea rise. It's, you know, it's eight or nine feet higher than anybody else I've seen. So was, what I'd like to know is, was the wave uprush setting designed to make the house level? And if so, it's a problem.
We have Reg Brown waiting, standing by. He's part of the applicant team. We've dealt with him many times before. If you'd like to ask him those questions.
Okay, those are two of my questions right now. Yes.
There he is. See him right there.
Chairman Jennings, this is Reg Brown. And on the, I'm the coastal engineer on this project to answer Chairman or Commissioner Maz's questions. The wave uprush, it's not necessarily the wave height that's coming in, but the extent that the wave breaks and uprushes up the slope. That's the number one thing. We also dealing with here is the FEMA minimum elevations. The base flood elevation for this VE zone is at elevation 24. We cannot have the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member below that elevation for any portion of this house. So that's, that's why you get this flat, flat floor for the first floor is because that FEMA elevation is so high. On other beaches like Carbon Beach is at 18. On other beaches, it could be as low as 13. I think it's 13 over by the Colony. And so that's, that's what we're, we're, we're designing this thing, meeting the most stringent, the most conservative of two different analysis is one on FEMA and one on the wave uprush.
Okay, what about your, which high tide line did you use and is it the most? See, landward high tide.
There was about 10 mean high tide lines that are public record that we were able to get a hold of. The, the oldest one goes back to 1875. That was one year before Custer's Last Stand. Okay? The most recent mean high tide line that we used was the 2017 mean high tide line. That mean high tide line was 125 feet seaward of the Pacific Coast Highway right of way line. The 2013 mean high tide line was at 105 feet or 20 feet landward of that 2017 mean high tide line. So per the LCP, we're required to use the most landward mean high tide line of record, which was the 2013. And then we take the 10 foot buffer off of that, which makes the buffer about 95 feet from Pacific Coast Highway right of way.
Okay, I got you. Question. Where, where do you measure the height of a building on the ocean? Do you measure it from the mean, the wave uprush bottom floor or do you measure it from FEMA? It was always my understanding that FEMA was just another number that had nothing to do with our car.
Is that the question for Reg Brown?
No, it's for Richard.
All right. Sorry, there was some distortion there. I was gonna ask the same question. Our code says recommended lowest finished floor elevation as determined by the wave uprush study.
Okay, so, so this house is taller than is allowed by our code. Since that is three feet below where they're recommending.
The, the lowest finished floor member. So there's a run up height and, and Reg can give the exact numbers here. There's a run up height and then there's a, wherever the, the lowest member height should be, and then that's our zero point.
But that's determined by the wave uprush, not by FEMA. And as I understood what he just said, is he's basing it on the FEMA height.
I'm double checking our code's language now. I think it just says the report.
The numbers I have written are the wave uprush is 24.6 and finished floor is 27. So it's a 2.4 foot difference.
Yeah, and that's why back east, I don't know about here, but you have houses ending up being one floor because they have a height limitation and it doesn't count hurricanes. So you go from the ocean up instead of.
So let's get Reg Brown's explanation on this. Will you unmute his microphone, please?
Okay, Chairman Jennings, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. What we're required to look at as coastal engineers is not only the analysis by the wave uprush study, but also the FEMA maps. Okay? And we have to take the one that governs. Okay, for the minimum finished floor. Okay, sometimes in most instances, the wave uprush study governs in the wave uprush, wave heights coming in underneath the house. Sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes the FEMA maps govern. And in, in, when the FEMA maps govern, especially when you're in a VE zone, which we are here, the VE zone goes all the way to about one foot from Pacific Coast Highway. The, the lowest bot, the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member has to be at the base flood elevation called out on the FEMA map. Okay, for that VE zone. And in this case, I believe it's elevation 24. So that would be the bottom of like a supporting beam, the bottom of a joist, the bottom of a slab. So you can see where if you have a beam, that doesn't give you a whole lot of room. We're going from 24 to 27. Okay? That's going to be the thickness of your floor plus the supporting beams below that floor. We cannot go below elevation 24.
Jeff, I just want to comment on that.
Okay, John.
What I'm talking about is what our code says. A house doesn't necessarily have to be 24 feet high. It has to fit in the area between the wave uprush calculation for the finished floor and the, the top of the house. If that happens to be 10 feet higher on the FEMA map, that 10 feet is lost. That's why all the houses on the east coast are one story on peers.
It may be the case on the east coast, but that's not what our code says.
Our code, Richard just read our code. It does not mention FEMA. It does not mention the recommended floor height. It mentions wave uprush. And so there may come a point someday in Malibu that we have lower floor heights, I mean, floor height plates, or we have one story houses in certain areas that are in the FEMA zone. But according to our code, that two and a half feet or whatever it is makes the house 23 and a half feet or 22 and a half feet instead of 24. Because you've hit the top of the plate.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody comment on, all right, so let's try to get some sort of a resolution on this thing. And I think we have probably three votes to grant some sort of a variance on the ocean side of the string line. But need to send it back to have it further refined by the, the designers and by staff. Craig?
Yeah. I, I can get to, to calling for a resolution. Let me first mention though, the, the sea wall may be an issue. There's a sea wall on the west side that runs perpendicular to the beach, so a return wall, basically, that would function as a groin. My thought is that if we're pulling everything in 10 feet, then the significance of that would be diminished. Its function as a groin would be less. But that's just, you know, if we're talking about a side scour for adjacent properties. And we, on Tuna Beach, just in the last few decades, we took out a bunch of groins precisely for what they did to the beach. So I don't think we want to be adding one here. I don't know if, if that caught anybody else's attention and whether if we said, let's pull the house in by 10 feet, whether that would shorten the sea wall to the point where it's insignificant.
Is it something that, that we could possibly make a determination on? If, if we told the, the applicant that they had to redesign it to pull landward, they would require to go back to their, to Reg Brown and have, have the impact of that, of that sea wall be analyzed, wouldn't they? I mean, I don't see that that's something that we can handle.
Yeah, so I guess I, I would make the, the motion that we pull the house in on the ocean side 10 feet from the current proposal and/or, I don't know whether we'd want to specify that in line with the deck on the west side of Ventress's property as being the house line. And pull it in on the ocean, on the PCH side by four feet.
Well, that's a 14 foot car, you're right, right?
That's a 14 foot what?
That's only an eight foot car. It's four, they're asking for four feet now.
They're asking for four, and I'm saying pull it in another four, so it's eight.
That means the car is going to stick out eight feet.
There's some confusion here, I believe. The, the, it's the second floor for which they've asked for the, the variance from the setback requirement. The first floor, I believe, the first floor, Lily, you helped me out here. I believe the first floor complies and doesn't need a variance. Am I right on that or wrong?
The required setback is twelve feet. They're asking for ten feet on the first floor and four feet on the second floor.
Okay, so there is a two-foot difference.
Okay, so I think at the very minimum, we, we go with the code, twelve feet.
Yeah.
Um, and I think of the front, the front as part of the motion is staff comes back with a real calculation of your drawing, okay? Uh, for us just to go ten feet or whatever, uh, staff can come back with that number. And show us. It might be eight feet, it might be fourteen feet.
I get your point. Uh, Trevor?
Chair Jennings, I, I, you know, they've applied for what they proposed here. I think we should bring them back to see if they're seeking a denial or it sounds like there's consensus towards an approval with, uh, you know, some redesign of, of pulling back here in a couple of areas, but can we?
I think that's a, I think that's a good idea. I think that they've heard, uh, what our thinking is on this. Maybe we should ask, uh, Mr. Wimmer, uh, if he's got the authority to tell us whether he's, uh, uh, looking for basically. Yeah, wait a minute. I think I've gotten ahead of myself here because we really have talked about. Yeah, okay, I, I straightened my mind out, I think. Mr. Wimmer, we're basically looking at a situation where, uh, the, the application as written, as presented to us, doesn't look like it's got to have, uh, the votes to pass. And we've talked about, uh, maybe out of line, we've talked about the things that we would like to see that would make it pass in our individual uh, capacities, but, uh, I guess the question is whether, uh, you would like us to proceed forward, uh, with this application, get you a vote on this application, or whether you would prefer to have, uh, the matter, uh, withdrawn or, uh, further discussions with staff and, um, uh, and perhaps revise the application before you answer, Trevor?
Yeah, so it, it, I was, I was gonna, uh, clarify that the, it appears the, the commission is not going to be able to make the findings as proposed, but with modification to, uh, pull the structure back by about ten feet in the backyard and two feet on the first floor in the front yard. We should also give direction on the, the deck string line as well. Uh, with those modifications, perhaps you could resubmit with those and you would be able to, um, find an approval from this commission. They will be able to make the findings for a, a proposal that would fit that if you're willing to, um, submit that redesign.
Okay, that's, that's what Trevor said is what I meant to say. Yes, John.
Would that be a continuance or would they be resubmitting and going through the whole deal?
I think.
Continuance for redesign.
Go ahead, Trevor. What, it would be what? Was it, you started to answer?
We would continue the item and then they would, they would, uh, resubmit and then we would, you know, we would have to have a new hearing based on the, the new proposal. But, um, you know, that, I, I think we would, you know, we could, we could continue this to another date. You don't need to renotice unless we want to renotice, but that'd be the process. So I think we need to see if they want to, how long they would need to make the changes if they're willing, and then we can continue it to that date or whatever Richard says with around that period of time that would work.
All right, that makes much more sense than than I, I got ahead of myself. I wanted to design the project myself. Okay, so Mr. Wimmer, uh, can you unmute, unmute him please for me, Kathleen?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh yeah, there, there's a, a lot to take in. Um, I did wanna, i- if it's okay, just, just discuss a couple of the, the, um, I guess pieces of direction related to the front and rear.
No, that's really not where we, that's not where we are right now, but, um, Mr. Wimmer, we, we really need to know whether you want us to go forward, vote on the application, uh, or, uh, or whether you are interested in, in pulling it back and, and, and and trying to meet with what you've heard obviously from the commission. We're not, uh, we're not in a point of debate at this point. Uh, that just means if we were to do that, it would, it would go on forever.
I'd just like to comment.
Just a second, John. Uh, Mr. Wimmer?
Can I just make two quick statements?
All right, sure. Two quick statements.
So, so first of all, along the front, we have enough space for two cars on the surface. There's about a twenty-foot shoulder between our property line and the first travel lane. There'd be no cars parked there. If you look at our, our exhibits, that clearly shows the travel lanes are, are further back. We're not parking where the cars park. We're not proposing to park where the cars park today. It'd be fully within our property.
Okay, okay, look.
A lot of circulation, so.
Let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, but we're not gonna give you a determination. You may be right. Uh, when you come back to us, that, that's something which you can use to convince us that you're okay. Um, but, um, but the issue now is, do you want us to vote on your project as presented?
Could I make a quick comment?
Yes, John.
Uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Wormer's dealt with us before, but we do this as a matter of courtesy so people don't have to, we give you the option because, so you don't have to start all over again and get in line all over again. So the, the question is, really, do you want to tweak it a little and come back to us, or do you want to appeal to the city council? Uh, or do you want to just start all over again? Um, and the reason why we do this as a matter of courtesy is to save all the notification time and all the, everything else if you start all over again.
Okay, John, Mr. Wimmer, you, you've got the floor, Mr. Wimmer.
Oh yeah, obviously, we can see the writing on the wall. We're not, we're not trying to get a denial tonight to answer your question. I guess I was, I was hopeful to have a little bit more of a back and forth, but if that's not acceptable to us or acceptable at this time, then, uh, we'll, we'll continue it and, and come back and design up from what we're hearing from you.
You know, each of us has phone numbers and, and we're all, uh, none of us has anything going in our lives other than just talking to applicants about our projects, so, uh, if you wanted to talk.
And I, I appreciate that, yeah.
Just don't call every other Monday at four in the afternoon.
If, if you do speak to the commissioners, please don't tell them what the other commissioners said or what your conversations are with them.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so I will, Jeff, I will move. We continue.
Uh, uh, let me make sure that we, I don't want to cut him off. I'm not sure. Uh, did you have something else? You, you, you didn't want a denial, so you're willing to, to continue the item, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
How long would you, would you need for the redesign?
Um, we could probably, if it's just architectural, then, um, I would think we could probably have something done in the next, uh, week or two. So maybe that puts us about a month maybe out as far as a continuance. If we can get to a date certain, I think that'd be appreciated.
Okay, could I ask?
Let, let, let's get Richard to give us a date certain.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, to let you know, uh, from a month from now, as I mentioned, you know, the, the two large ticket items at this point are the two conditional use permits, the tow yard and the uh, temporary parking for the farmer's market. Uh, there will obviously be a couple DMWs probably and, and one or two homes. Uh, so that's the agenda, so we could schedule it for that night if you, uh, the commission is okay with that. That would be the second meeting in May, which is the
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Or the other options, the first meeting in June. However, to keep in mind on that, we're targeting that date for the, uh, Sea View Hotel project to come before the commission.
Richard, is that gonna be enough time if they're turning the plans around? Do you got a staff report out?
I would think if we're looking probably at the second meeting in June. Realistically.
Second meeting in June would be the best that way because right now that agenda is light. And also it, uh, it gives us the extra time to review it because if we were to try a month from today, we would need that staff report by the end, or excuse me, those revised plans by about the end of this week, early next week, and
No, no, no.
Billy would have to be turning that around within a couple of days.
So what date is that, Richard? Twenty-first, twenty-first of June?
That's correct.
Okay, John, what's your motion?
Uh, well, Trevor wants to speak.
Sure, Chair Jennings, I just suggest before you take the motion, I, I assume for a continuance, um, does the commission want to provide a little bit of guidance about, uh, what you're looking for on the deck string line? I think you talked about moving the building back ten feet. Would it be a similar amount for the deck is what you're, the commission's looking for?
You know, personally, when I was drawing those diagrams, as, as Craig pointed out, I couldn't tell what was deck and what was, what was building. But I, it, from my own perspective, the same principle alive, applies. Buildings should, should be aligned with the buildings. Uh, the deck should be in line with the decks. I see Craig nodding his head, so that's pretty much, and so is Dennis.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we continue this item to June seventeenth, was that it?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, Kathleen, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so, uh, that concludes item, um, four A, where are they now, four A? Um, and continued, continued. We're now at item five A.
Quick break?
These, the, the lights are gone. I'll tell you what, uh, yeah, did somebody say break? It's eight, it's eight twenty-five. How about, uh, we've got a light. Let's go to, to, uh, twenty-five minutes of nine. Is that all right? Take a break? All right, twenty-five minutes of nine.
Please everyone turn off your video on your sound.
Now that I'm looking at it, it's not really proposed on the elevation, but that was, to my knowledge, it was going to be behind like a parapet, so it was going to be visually screened, but I believe the applicant can confirm that answer.
Okay. And Craig?
Yeah, I, I have a question about the demo process and the replacement. The way it's, you have it flagged now, you have a number of places where there are posts and you've allocated sixteen inches and there are several walls on either side of the garage, for example. Where it seems to me in practice, you would end up taking out the entire wall and replacing it, that it just, it's either, there are about eight or twelve areas where it feels like in practice you'd add an extra sixteen inches. Because you're, if you're adding sixteen inches, you, you have to be taking the blocking out or replacing the blocking on both sides of the post, so that's actually thirty-two inches. Because you're, unless you're going to be trying to sister or scab the blocking halfway through to the blocking on the other side. So my question is, I, I know just enough about framing to understand that this doesn't seem realistic and that if, if you counted the extra sixteen inches on, on all these isolated spots, you'd be, you'd have about, you've got about fifteen feet to play with to, before you reach the four oh five. Or half of four oh five and it looks like you might go over that, so. I, I, I don't know if I can frame the question right, but it just seems like you're specifying too little demo for the things that you're wanting to take out there. How, can you? Can you extricate a single post and replace it without having to change the blocking on both sides of it? I guess that's my question. How do you do that?
I believe you're speaking to the applicant at this point, right? Commissioner?
On, on that, I guess that's for staff, actually, because I, you know.
Yeah, we, we, if Tyler, if it's better for the applicant to ask, we should let them speak and then we can follow up after.
I mean, it can follow, I don't need to hear about from right away, but at some point, I think that's a potential concern.
Okay, so let's see, yes, John?
Additional disclosure, I asked Tyler to determine whether the deck on the house that we're drawing the line to was permitted under the permits that were given in eighty-two. And I never really got an answer, so that's a question I'm going to have.
Okay. Any other questions of staff, if not, we'll go to the public hearing, Kathleen, who have we got?
We just have the applicant team of Charles Santos, Wayne Chevalier and then the owners Brooke and Anna Linfist.
Okay, that's all applicant team?
Correct.
And no other speakers signed up, as far as you know?
They have not, no.
Okay, so let's open up whoever is going to be speaking for the applicant team. Do we know who that is?
I believe it's Charles Santos.
Okay, Mr. Santos, I see him there, he's muted.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you, you have fifteen minutes, you can save as much of that as you wish for rebuttal, although it doesn't appear right now that we have any speakers in opposition, but you never know. So, you're, you're on fifteen minutes.
Thank you Chair Jennings and Commissioners. I think we'll discuss the demo calculation first, even though I believe we're really here for the variance for the deck string line, but there are questions about the APR and the demolition. I will discuss it as best as I can and I'll have the architect Wayne maybe discuss the, the posts in general, but there are some demo of the first floor garage walls to include some new posts. And so the remodel policy discusses that when you are calculating your demolition, when one or more studs are removed, replaced or sistered in, the removed portion of the wall shall include half the distance to the next stud on both sides of the affected studs. So it's a four-inch new post that's being proposed. Three on one side of the garage, three on the other. That four-inch post includes six inches on each side of it to meet that, that policy of, of how you calculate the demo. And that's how we came up with that calculation in our demo. The architectural plans, the demolition plans, as well as preliminary framing plans by David Weiss, were submitted to Building and Safety to conduct a preliminary plan check, at which point they run through the plans and verify that it meets the below fifty percent demo calculation. We went through that. So as far as I understand, these demo calculations are accurate and we followed the city's remodel policy to come up with, with this forty-six percent. In regards to the proposed HVAC unit up on the roof, my understanding is that will be screened by the new parapet walls. And then in regards to the the deck string line, so the idea was because the trending decks along the down coast are beyond our property, two one three zero zero was pretty much in line with, with our, our deck and we're extending it east and west, we're not extending it seaward, so we thought this was a reasonable request to use two one three zero zero PCH for our proposed deck string line.
Here's the site plan showing all of the proposed additions. The area circled in yellow to the right is the fifty-square-foot landside addition to the entryway and the three circles in red to the left are the areas of the deck that are being expanded. The two to the most left are the first floor and the one kind of inwards is the second floor deck. Next slide, please. This is the first floor demo plan, the red lines with measurements are the linear feet of exterior demolition to the structure. The first floor will have eighty-nine feet four inches of linear wall demolition. That constitutes about forty-two point four percent of the total of that floor. Next slide, please. The second floor will have ninety-eight feet three inches worth of linear demo and that accounts to about fifty point one percent of the total on that floor. Next slide, please. Combined, the project proposes a total of one hundred and eighty-seven feet seven inches of linear wall demo, which constitutes forty-six point two percent of the entire structure. This will be the first proposed remodel since the LP, LCP's adoption in two thousand and two. The applicant is allowed to remodel the existing structure and keep its non-conformities, so as long as they do not demo fifty percent of the structure pursuant to LIP chapter thirteen point five C. The proposed demo is under the fifty percent threshold. Next slide, please. Here are some elevations that demonstrate the roof line changes. To the left are the north and south existing elevations. There's a horizontal dotted line that you see towards the top which represents twenty-four feet from the applicable grade. To the right are the proposed north and, are the proposed north and south elevations. As you can see, some areas that were below twenty-four feet are being raised to that twenty-four foot line. Some areas of the roof are above twenty-four feet and those areas of the roof are being maintained. Next slide, please. The last major component of the project is for an ocean, is for an ocean side first and second floor deck extension shown in green here, first on the left and second on the right. The applicant is applying for a variance to use an alternative deck corner for their string line. Next slide, please. Pursuant to LIP chapter three point six G three B, the deck string line is taken by drawing a straight line and connecting them to the closest deck corner of the adjacent up coast property and connecting that with the closest corner of the nearest down coast property. Following this language, the applicant's deck is already existing non-conforming because it exceeds the existing deck string line. In order to achieve the requested deck extension, the applicant is asking for a variance to use the corner of the deck located at twenty-one three hundred PCH, three houses down coast. It's important to note that the deck extensions requested, the deck extensions requested will be lateral. They will not project further seaward than the limit of the existing deck. Next slide, please. As seen in this aerial, the general trend of the houses along this stretch of PCH are almost congruent in terms of their deck placement, except for the two parcels immediately down coast from the subject property. If the applicant was one house further up coast, the proposed deck extensions would be allowed without the variance. So the property will not constitute a special privilege and on the contrary, the applicant with the variance would be allowed to use experience by the majority of others in their neighborhood. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty-one thirty-four approving the project as conditioned. I and the applicant team are available for any questions.
Oh, hey, thank you Tyler. Let's get disclosures, let's start with John.
I did talk to Tyler about where the twenty-seven foot areas were. He gave me the answer, it's also in the staff report.
Craig?
Yeah, I met onsite with Charles Santos and we had some email. Discussed the demo plan in some more detail and I'll have a question or two about that. With regard to the fifty percent calculation or forty-six something anyway. And also, we talked about, he looked up some fire department regulations regarding chimney heights and how high the roof, the chimney has to be above roof. I think that's it on disclosures.
Dennis, you had your hand up, hold it, hold it Dennis, just a second, Trevor?
Commissioner Hill, did you learn anything that was not in the staff report?
Oh, I learned that there is a fire department regulation that requires the chimney to be two feet above the roof level for a radius of ten feet around it, which seems to be what generated the extra height on the chimney in this project. I, I don't have confirmation that that's why, but the chimney height was increased several feet, so that now the total height is something on the order of thirty feet-ish.
Dennis?
Yes, I went to the sites, saw Charles Santos, Wayne and Mr. Weiss. Just went over what's in this staff report.
Who did I miss, David? You're muted, David.
Site visit, met with the principal and the architects, nothing in learning anything, it was in the staff report.
And none for me. Okay, questions of staff or can we go to the public hearing, John?
Real quick question, where is, is the HVAC new and is it going in and is it over twenty-four feet?
The HVAC is new, it's on the roof. You know, now that I'm looking at it, it's not really proposed on the elevation, but that was, to my knowledge, it was going to be behind like a parapet, so it was going to be visually screened, but I believe the applicant can confirm that answer.
Okay. And Craig?
Yeah, I, I have a question about the, the demo process and the replacement. The way it's, you have it flagged now, you have a number of places where there are posts and you've allocated sixteen inches and there are several walls on, on either side of the garage, for example. Where it seems to me in practice, you would end up taking out the entire wall and replacing it, that it just, it's either, there are about eight or twelve areas where it feels like in practice you'd add an extra sixteen inches. Because you're, if you're adding sixteen inches, you, you have to be taking the blocking out or replacing the blocking on both sides of the post, so that's actually thirty-two inches. Because you're, unless you're going to be trying to sister or scab the blocking halfway through to the blocking on the other side. So my question is, I, I know just enough about framing to understand that this doesn't seem realistic and that if, if you counted the extra sixteen inches on, on all these isolated spots, you'd be, you'd have about, you've got about fifteen feet to play with to, before you reach the four oh five. Or half of four oh five and it looks like you might go over that, so. I, I, I don't know if I can frame the question right, but it just seems like you're specifying too little demo for the things that you're wanting to take out there. How, can you? Can you extricate a single post and replace it without having to change the blocking on both sides of it? I guess that's my question. How do you do that?
I believe you're speaking to the applicant at this point, right? Commissioner?
On, on that, I guess that's for staff, actually, because I, you know.
Yeah, we, we, if Tyler, if it's better for the applicant to ask, we should let them speak and then we can follow up after.
I mean, it can follow, I don't need to hear about from right away, but at some point, I think that's a potential concern.
Okay, so let's see, yes, John?
Additional disclosure, I asked Tyler to determine whether the deck on the house that we're drawing the line to was permitted under the permits that were given in eighty-two. And I never really got an answer, so that's a question I'm going to have.
Okay. Any other questions of staff, if not, we'll go to the public hearing, Kathleen, who have we got?
We just have the applicant team of Charles Santos, Wayne Chevalier and then the owners Brooke and Anna Linfist.
Okay, that's all applicant team?
Correct.
And no other speakers signed up, as far as you know?
They have not, no.
Okay, so let's open up whoever is going to be speaking for the applicant team. Do we know who that is?
I believe it's Charles Santos.
Okay, Mr. Santos, I see him there, he's muted.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you, you have fifteen minutes, you can save as much of that as you wish for rebuttal, although it doesn't appear right now that we have any speakers in opposition, but you never know. So, you're, you're on fifteen minutes.
Thank you Chair Jennings and Commissioners. I think we'll discuss the demo calculation first, even though I believe we're really here for the variance for the deck string line, but there are questions about the APR and the demolition. I will discuss it as best as I can and I'll have the architect Wayne maybe discuss the, the posts in general, but there are some demo of the first floor garage walls to include some new posts. And so the remodel policy discusses that when you are calculating your demolition, when one or more studs are removed, replaced or sistered in, the removed portion of the wall shall include half the distance to the next stud on both sides of the affected studs. So it's a four-inch new post that's being proposed. Three on one side of the garage, three on the other. That four-inch post includes six inches on each side of it to meet that, that policy of, of how you calculate the demo. And that's how we came up with that calculation in our demo. The architectural plans, the demolition plans, as well as preliminary framing plans by David Weiss, were submitted to Building and Safety to conduct a preliminary plan check, at which point they run through the plans and verify that it meets the below fifty percent demo calculation. We went through that. So as far as I understand, these demo calculations are accurate and we followed the city's remodel policy to come up with, with this forty-six percent. In regards to the proposed HVAC unit up on the roof, my understanding is that will be screened by the new parapet walls. I guess on, you know, if, if, if there's any further question about how those were derived, but we followed planning's guidance on how to deduct for those posts. And if there's any other questions, I'm happy, happy to address those as well.
All right, is there anything further from the applicant team, you've got eleven minutes to go? You don't have to use it all.
None for me. I think we'll save it for any rebuttal if necessary.
Okay, fine, you've got eleven minutes and fifteen seconds and we'll see if there are any other speakers. Kathleen, do we have any, any further speakers? Kathleen, do we have any, any further speakers?
We do not have any at this time.
Okay, well, you've got eleven minutes and fifteen seconds. You've got anything else you want to say?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, if we have questions, we can be able to call you back, uh, at that time. So that concludes the public hearing. We'll close that portion of the hearing and we'll move it back to the planning commission table, uh, for comments, discussion, Craig?
Uh, just maybe we can put this to bed. So it's before we get to other bigger issues maybe, but, um, okay, so if they're cutting in new posts, does that question for the applicant, does that imply that your existing walls there are greater than sixteen inch on center? You've got what, like twenty fours or something or? Or are you cutting them in to double up on the existing posts that are there? And, and I guess, but I'll, that's the question, but I'll finish by saying, if you're replacing the post, and I don't know if this applies when you're putting in a new one, but to say you're just dealing with six inches on, on either side of it isn't accurate because you have the whole block, which is twelve inches on either side of it, that would have to be changed. I'm not sure how that affects putting in a new post, but in addition to the post, there are other areas where you have like a new window replacing a, an old one and doors and changing some things around where you've got several moves right next to each other that have been counted in isolation, but as a practical matter, you would end up taking out that whole section and redoing it. So I just thought I'd call that out too. I, I just find it hard to believe that the, the, uh, maybe you meet the paper calculation here, but in practice, there's going to be more than fifty cent, fifty percent out on the, on the floor there. Um, so the question is, if you're putting in new posts, wha- i- is it because the centers on the old ones are greater than sixteen?
Wayne, are you, or Charles, one of you want to respond?
Yeah, I can mute them.
You have to, yeah.
Someone named Brooke Landfest has that, their hand raised also.
Yes, the applicant, the owner.
That's the property owner, yeah.
Okay.
This is Charles. I can, I can discuss a little bit about the structural. I'm not a structural engineer, but I met with, uh, Dave Weiss on Friday and Wayne, uh, about the structural and I got some clarification from, uh, our structural engineer as to what, what's going on in the garage. I specifically asked him. So the way it was explained to me is, this, this is a, uh, a large remodel and there are new sheer walls that are needed and new beams to support the structure to meet the current building code. And the way Dave explained it to us was that in the garage, those posts will be supporting new beams. And those beams will also be part of the, uh, the future sheer wall. So there are new posts to support beams and these are, these are structural upgrades to meet the current building code.
What are you replacing then? That, what are you demoing if you're just adding a, a parallel wall? You're demoing something in the old wall, right?
You're opening up the walls to add in four by four posts, uh, tied into the existing top plate and bottom plate. And each of those posts will ha- carry a new, a new beam in the garage ceiling.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm skeptical, but I, 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 I don't think with the whole project hangs on this necessarily. So let's, let's leave it there for the moment.
So let me see, uh, who was it that, oh, there, Mr. Lynn Fest? The property owner, do you have something to remain to the issue of, uh, uh, Mr. Hill's comments?
I, I think tabling it was fine. I just, um, I just sort of wanted to reiterate, I thought we were here for the variance portion. Um, I'm pretty sure we're confident that we're beating the fifty percent or forty-six percent calculations based on the planning department's review and their code and our construction methodology, which David Weiss has taken into account, but, um, I just wanted to sort of underline, I thought this was about the variances we've applied for.
Interesting point because, uh, it is an administrative, it, the project is an administrative plan review. And, and because there is a variance involved, I take it that's the reason why Richard has brought it to the planning commission. But what is the, the, what is the position of our jurisdiction here, Richard? Is it, are we reviewing only the, the discretionary review, only the variance, or are we reviewing the, the staff's action with, or your reaction, I should say, with regard to the administrative plan review proposal?
Because of the variance, this item is now going to be determined by the planning commission. Uh, if there were no variance, then correct, the staff would be, uh, I would be signing the notice of decision. But in this case, the whole project has been referred to you due to the variance.
Okay, fine.
If I could.
I stand corrected. I wasn't, uh, I wasn't as, uh, up on the procedural ramifications of our uh, variance application. So.
Well, you, you're, you're right there with the rest of us then. Uh, Tyler, did you?
Yeah, Chair Jennings, if I could just add one thing, and it's just to really confirm what, uh, Charles said is, um, so this, we have a, anything, any uh, exterior demo that extends more than thirty-five percent, we call a major remodel. And so we, we have this practice in play where we have the applicant, uh, preliminarily put together some structural plans. What the planning department does is we look at those structural plans, you know, collectively with the architectures, just to basically match them up to make sure the same linear walls are being demoed, in which case they were. And at, after that point, we kind of give them a blue said stamp saying they're good to go. They go into the preliminary plan check process with building safety. In which case, uh, Yolanda and her department would verify our, uh, would basically confirm the numbers that we see on the architectural plant. And in this case, Yolanda did confirm that it does in, in, in congruence with our remodel policy, structurally, it maintained the forty-six percent demo that they were, that they were, uh, proposing.
Yeah, I think that, that it's important to realize that, that the whole issue of what's a remodel and what's not, and what's a replacement wall and what's not, is something that we have argued about and debated about for, I don't know, what, ten years, I guess, uh, ever since the adoption of the LCP. And, and a lot of the stuff that has come down is just sta- staff and the architect community basically saying, okay, this is the way we're going to do it. Um, and this is the way we're going to count it. And, and so the, the policies have come together. It may not make sense in, in some cases about, uh, uh, in, in terms of this is really the way you're going to do it. But the policies are the policies and, and in a way, there is something to be said for consistency of application to from project to project. John, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, note that there is a written, policy manual written by the planning department that has a, a full description of everything on remodels. And what you count and what you don't, it's very cut and dried, it's approved by us. And it's in, it's in the, uh, in their manual.
Charles quoted from it. So he did give us the language.
Yeah, uh, I have another question here and that is we're determining this variance on it, on a deck that's three doors down at, uh, twenty-one, three hundred. And it's a very large deck. It appears to be from the, the, uh, aerial. But it has permits. And their CDP, their coastal permits, number five eighty-two, two seventy-five and five eighty-two, four eleven. And so that string line depends on whether that's a legal deck. If it's, if it's been extended without a permit, we should only allow the string line to go to where it's permitted. So I propose to put in the conditions that that deck is verified for that string line. Because it, it appears to be two to three times the size of any other deck in the neighborhood. In fact, it's practically half the house. So, uh, I just want to point that out. We should, if we have permits available, we should look at.
Commissioner Maza, if I can answer that question. Um, so I looked into this, uh, at your proposal. The, the record history is, is very light. The house was constructed in the nineteen forties, I believe. And, um, there was no coastal commission, uh, history that I was able to find. We have no real records in our city of Malibu history. So it's very hard to find, you know, whether or not the deck, as you said, was expanded at some time. I did, uh, present, uh, an aerial photo, uh, aerial photo to you from California coastline.org that in my opinion shows the same exact deck from nineteen seventy-nine. And, and I don't know if we can get any closer than that, we can ask the applicant, but from my research, it was, it was hard to find actual verified.
Well, there's, there's actual CDPs issued. Five eighty-two, two seventy-five, according to your staff report and.
That's for the subject property, two one three one four PCH. That's not for twenty-one, three hundred PCH. Two one three one four had a couple of deck extension applications that were approved by the coastal commission in the eighties. And that's what those, uh, uh, permits apply to.
Okay, that's not the way I read it, but okay, that's true.
The other thing is that if you look at the area on page three of eleven, that is a very large deck. It's on that target, but uh, at least it, it appears that the two houses to the east of that. Uh, it's hard to tell whether one's a covered deck or not, but there is certainly an open deck on the second house down. So I'm not sure that anything would be aimed or lost by, you know, by moving that line back or forth. I mean, it's still, the, the principle still applies that, that, that seems to be a line of development, uh, of the, of the coast at that point. It is a little ups, it, it, you know, it, it's not a legal argument, but it's, it, it, it's, uh, how do we, it, it, what the applicant is trying to do is say, look, we've got this stuff and it's, it's legal non-conforming and we're going to keep the legal non-conforming part of it. And we're going to raise everything else to, 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 you know, to the extent we can. And then, oh, by this, uh, as far as this deck is concerned, uh, we, we've got it and it's legal non-conforming or it's, or it's maybe it's permitted as it is, but but, and, but we can't change that because it's part of the legal non-conforming. So let us have a variance to square it off. I mean, it's, it's, I get it. You know, for my house, I would probably make the same application, but it does, it, it just, it, it, I don't know how to say it. It's, it, it, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth, I guess. Lack of a better term, Craig?
To me, it seems like the, the western portion is, seems fine. It just fills in a block there that wouldn't change any views for anybody. The eastern portion though, I, it, it might be okay, but I'm, I'm, uh, unsettled a bit by the fact that, uh, that there has been no contact with that immediate neighbor, according to, uh, Tyler and to, uh, Charles. It just seems like, you know, maybe that, that little corner is okay, but the fact that we haven't heard from the owner there just is, is unsettling to me.
Okay, yes, uh, David.
I asked the same question. That neighbor, if I'm recalling correctly, is there a couple of months maybe out of the year and it's almost never around? And to Jeff's point, uh, I agree that they're asking, they're asking for bits and pieces of things that all together are, are, you know, taking everything that they can get. On the other hand, the deck, the string line, there, there is no further extension. It's filling in little square corners that is, in my opinion, maybe sketchy, but at the end of the day, no harm, no foul. So I, I don't see that you, you, you deny them for the bad taste reasons that you were talking about.
No, no, I, I, I wasn't suggesting that. I, I get your point. I mean, I, there've been cases, you know, projects that I am particularly liking that I said, okay, it meets the law, I'm going to apply it, but, other comments? If not, let's try to get to a motion. Yeah, Craig?
Motion?
Yeah, on the, on the height, I'm, I'm, I'm just fuzzy on what's allowable and it, I mean, it seems like we're adding an extra two feet with the chimney. It's going up to about thirty feet. I thought we were, don't we have a twenty-eight foot maximum regardless? Or what, what am I missing?
Chimneys don't count.
Yeah, he doesn't count. All right, that explains that. Then my other question is about, um, and I had some contact with Charles about this, but the, the roofing material is interesting. It has a PVC component to it. PVC is very flammable. Uh, he confirmed that the material is Class A fire rated. Uh, it's fine for the fire department in LA County, but I wondered, is that necessarily true in a high fire hazard severity zone such as we're in? Whether that PVC roof is in fact still compliant in this district? It, maybe staff, Richard, does, have, have we seen these before? Is this a common thing?
Not my knowledge. Uh, now, that doesn't say we haven't seen them. We, we don't typically ask for roofing uh, material makeup. We're more interested in the color of the roofing material in the planning department. We don't want to approve something that has an issue with, uh, reflectivity or color. Uh, but it would be something though, that, and Charles can comment on this. My assumption here would be like all of our other applications. This was reviewed by the folks in the California office. And the fire department will be looking at this as well as our building department for the building code compliance, because your, your question is, uh, basically, i- i- it's a building code requirement.
Right. And I guess my wonder is, uh, the question really is, how likely is it something like that could be missed? Because we're just looking at the LA code and we're not necessarily looking at what's allowed in a high fire hazard severity zone.
I, but isn't that true of, of every issue that goes into a building of a, uh, you know, things could be missed. I mean, how, how do we know that the people who are in charge of code compliance are actually doing their job? I mean, uh, we don't have the ability to, to, to look at the chemical makeup of the paint that's going to go on the exterior and the rest of the stuff. I mean, it's just not something that the planning function, that, that's part of the planning function. David, you had your hand there.
Yeah, I'd like to move the, uh, adoption of the planning commission resolution and the administrative plan review.
Staff's recommendation, is that correct? Chair Jennings, I do see that the owner has his hand up. I don't know if you want to, oh, he took it, okay.
Yes, Mr. Lynn Fest?
He, he, he took it down, so I, I guess.
Took it down, all right. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Okay, Dennis, moved and seconded, further discussion. Kathleen, can you call the roll?
Hi, Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm moving.
Moved and we adjourned. Kathleen, uh, I'll second it. Call the roll, Kathleen.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys.
Good night.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.